Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Francisco, will you pull the board, please?
Mrs. Leonard. Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Perella.
Yes.
Mr. Petroselli.
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson.
Yes. Student representative, Saloney.
Hi all, for anyone that doesn't know me, my name is Saloney, I'm a junior here at Kinnon High School. So I'd just like to share some accomplishments of the students from the halls from Kinnon Public Schools. So to start off from Keel Cisco, we kicked off our toy drive benefiting local families on November twenty-sixth. We received an amazing response and are so glad to be able to bring cheer to so many families during this holiday season. Thank you to entire school community for your contributions. Also, we held our annual holiday shop on December fourth, fifth, and sixth. Many thanks to our Keisha parents and volunteers for making this incredible shopping experience possible for our pre-K through second grade students. We are very excited to kick off our holiday winter concert series, beginning with kindergarten tomorrow at ten a.m. First grade is scheduled for Thursday, second grade is scheduled for Friday, and preschool will be held on Monday twelve sixteen. We are also looking forward to a holiday card making activity for all K to two students during their lunch and recess periods on December seventeenth that will be facilitated by KHS students and their advisor, Dr. Florio. Congratulations to our Keel Cisco Governor's Educator of the Year, Mrs. Casey Pillock. Mrs. Pillock's hard work and dedication to our students never goes unnoticed. Thank you for all that you do. On behalf of Keel Cisco School, we wish our students, staff, and families a wonderful holiday season and happy new year in two thousand and twenty-five. Next, we'll move on to Stony Brook. So our third grade students in Miss Stogibbs and Miss Tennant's classes learned about the history of the Macy's Thanksgiving Parade and held a parade of their own for Stony Brook students to watch. They did a wonderful, wonderful job. On December sixth, Stony Brook hosted PE Jam, which was organized by Mr. Pasicka and a colleague in a neighboring district. Ninety physical education teachers from around the state of New Jersey came to model lessons, learn from one another, and share ideas. Thank you to Mr. Pasicka for a wonderful day and to our fifth grade students who participated in this day of learning. Also, our Keisha sponsored holiday shop was held on December ninth and tenth. It was so much fun watching our students shop for gifts for their families. Thank you, Keisha. Stony Brook Student Council is holding both a food drive and a toy drive. Thank you to our families for your generosity. Next, the kindness crew has been collecting cereal boxes for a local food pantry. Almost two hundred fifty boxes have been collected so far. A Domino cereal challenge will be held on December thirteenth for all students to watch. Thank you to all of our families who have donated cereal. Next, our holiday winter concerts will be held on December seventeenth and nineteenth for our families. We invite you to join us to hear our amazing choir and fifth grade band students. Also, Stony Brook is so excited to announce our Governor's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Susan Hill, and our Governor's Educational Service Provider of the Year, Mrs. Joy Tenga. We are so proud of both of you. Thank you to your hard work and dedication to our students and families. Stony Brook School wishes our staff, students, and families a wonderful holiday. We hope that you take time to relax and spend time with family and friends. We will see you on January second, two thousand and twenty-five. Moving on to PRM, our social outreach club members visited Keel School on Wednesday, November twentieth for the annual Thanksgiving feast. Our students enjoyed spending time with the younger students and participating in Thanksgiving themed activities. We thank Dr. Medler, our SOC advisor, Mrs. Olywalle, and the staff at Keel for making this wonderful event happen. The Treps Marketplace took place on December third. The young entrepreneurs in the Treps program did an outstanding job of creating, marketing, and selling their products. We thank our Treps advisor, Mrs. Setkowski, and all the volunteers from KHS and the HSA for the invaluable support they provided to facilitate this outstanding program. Also, thank you to everyone who donated to the sixth grade class committee toy drive. All donations will go to children in need to help brighten their holiday season. And lastly, the holiday winter concerts for PRM will be next week. We invite you to join our talented student musicians perform on Monday at seven p.m. for the choir concert and Wednesday at seven p.m. for the band concert. And lastly, moving on to KHS, KHS proudly selected Mrs. Danielle Elliott as Governor's Teacher of the Year and Mrs. Stephanie Seobaugh as Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year. On November twenty-sixth, Kinnon High School held Shadow Day, a day when eighth graders from PRM shadowed KHS students in their afternoon classes. It was a great day of hand-on learning and new friendships. Next, the KHS Student Council hosted a Powderpuff football game at the Spiro Sports Center. The Kinnon High School football players served as coaches and assisted each team throughout the week with their practices and at the game. And lastly, the KHS Trust Club will be hosting a Winter Wonderland event for students in grades K to eight on December twelfth from six to seven p.m. in the old cafeteria at the high school. There will be games, crafts, photos, and lots of fun. Please join us, and that's all.
Thanks, Saloney. Mr. Mango.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President, thank you, Saloney, welcome, everyone. And so typically, welcome. I have a separate slide of just updates. I think if, I know most of you here tonight are not here for basic updates of the district, and there really isn't that much board business, but one big item I will share that's out in our community. I shared it three weeks ago, revolves around our new gym here in the high school. And, you know, obviously, the first level of concern for Ms. Whitwer as the athletic director and myself as the superintendent and therefore the board is to always look to err on the side of caution. So we did that because we definitely have some issues in the new gym. But we took some steps in a different direction. We brought in our architect to record to confirm, you know, what is the level of concern? Are we, you know, could we be a little bit on a smidge airing too much? Our architect, the record did come in this past Monday, yesterday, in the rainstorm and did follow up today. She will follow up in writing, which I've relayed to the board, that she doesn't believe right now that it's as big a tripping hazard as we thought. So for next week's home openers for the high school boys and girls teams, they will be back in the new gym. However, I will say, the district reserves the right to always reverse any call based on water intake, the floor movement, because again, our concern is for not only our students who were there every day and our staff, but now incoming students. So I wanted to put that out there, and if you wanted to look at a positive, the letter that is up on the website that Ms. Whitwer put together, which was an excellent job, clearly shows that unlike a majority of other school districts, we can pivot and we can manage. We have space in our facilities. Almost makes you wish you could do a play stop and go back in time in COVID and change some scheduling on a daily basis. And we would have at-home onsite games regardless. But I will promise everybody in this room that our facilities going into the next budget, twenty-five, twenty-six, and beyond as they've already been, will continue to be a major area of focus for us because our facilities are in dire need and unfortunately, there are some major issues underneath that gym floor. But that's not why you're here. I wanted to put that out there to anybody here for basketball that was going to wait till after we were over. We have what we have, we are where we are. So with that, I'd like to move on because tonight is a very special night outside of why our folks are here. And I will say, one more thing, we're trying, three times a year, we recognize our sports, okay, at PRM in the high school. And what we're finding, not only just from recognizing our sports, but then from recognizing our student recognition as last month's meeting, is that when we have the banner behind us and folks come up, I understand we all have lives and then we take pictures and then people leave. And then by the time we get more to the tail end, our auditorium is like empty. And we know it's time consuming, so we want to try something different tonight. So when we go through our, a board presentation, we're going to call up Ms. Whitwer, who's going to then call up the coaches, who'll come up, say a few words, recognize our students. But we're going to ask that you then go back to your seats, and then when we recess, the banner is outside. Mrs. Trombetta will take pictures for the district and the website. Families are free to take pictures and you could take as much time as you like because sometimes folks are here for too long and sometimes they rush out. We're trying to be fair to everybody. So if you could just kind of bear with us tonight, I'd really appreciate that. So special tonight is our very own Mr. Michael Petroselli, our Vice President of the Board. I have to say that it's not every day that Board of Education members run consistently. A lot of times in my travels, and it's, I've been dealing with Boards of Ed for twenty years, so take that for what that's worth. They might be a one-time run and step off, they might be two, they might run for a year and then be removed or remove themselves or a year and a half. Honestly, folks, I've seen it all, and I thought it was important to share a lot here tonight and present about Mr. Petroselli and what he's done because everything he's done here in this community for the last twelve years has impacted everybody in this room and everybody outside of this room to the positive. I knew that about Mr. Petroselli. Once I moved here, my family relocated around Christmas time in two thousand and seventeen. And although granted, I had my own district to run at the time and operate, I always listened, I always observed. Obviously, during COVID and we had Zoom meetings, what felt for like two and a half years here. Mike was at the head of that for a majority of it, had the good pleasure of watching it. And then when things happened, you know, we became very close with each other. He's not your typical Board of Education member. Our community has been fortunate to have him. And you could see it from here that outside of his consecutive terms and his sustainability and any type of aggravation or stress, trust me, and I see Mrs. Petroselli here tonight and her family, and trust me, it goes back into their homes. So when you hear me say here in many of our public meetings over the last two years that this board works and it's day and night, and I know that I'm invading space when I'm calling them at home on Saturdays and Sundays or emails and texts or a random Wednesday night, it's an interrupter. And Mike did that for twelve years, from January of two thousand and thirteen to this coming new year. So if you think about that block of time, think about where we all were in this room in two thousand and thirteen and how life was. Or for some of us who might have younger ones that, you know, now they're in high school and they were little at the time, or you may have mixed now, whatever that may be, that's a long run. And that's a lot of aggravation, that's a lot of decision-making. And Boards of Ed and Board of Ed members can only make decisions based on the knowledge they know. So the more time they give, the less time they have for their family at home and the more they're giving back to their community, which, Mike, it's absolutely commendable. And I did ask you, I want to say at least four times in this whole year to stay and to reconsider, but I certainly respect and understand why. But some more accolades that, that Mike has, you know, he was the Board of Ed president for two consecutive years at some of the worst times there ever was to be a board president during COVID, right? He was the vice president two different times, two terms, or actually five terms, from one one-twenty-two till now is three consecutive terms and prior to COVID. He was part of two Boards of Ed that received board certification in two thousand and seventeen and twenty-four. And for anyone here that doesn't know what that is, that's all their coursework. It's everything they're required to do as elected officials and then some. And a lot of times, Boards of Ed don't want to do that. They want to be elected for a purpose or a reason, or they might run on a shtick, right? They might run for a one-trick pony. I have to tell you, being with Mike for twenty-six months, he is far from a one-trick pony. He will tell you what he thinks, he'll be honest with you. As a superintendent, he never sucker punched me, never gave me a sideswipe here in public. He has no problem telling you what he thinks and being honest, and that I embrace because I'm the same way. But he always does his business respectfully, and as a community, we were lucky to have him. And last year, he was nominated for the Irene La Farbe Excellence in Boardmanship Award. So I know I'm going to call up Mrs. Donaldson next as Board President. I know she has a few words, and Mike, I know you're going to want the mic later, and this isn't typically your style, but it's my pleasure to honor you, it's been my pleasure to work with you, and we'll still continue on in the community together, so thank you.
Okay, proclamation. Whereas Michael Petroselli did faithfully and consciously serve the Kinnon School District as a member of the Kinnon Board of Education representing Kinnon end. Whereas Michael Petroselli has served as a member of the Kinnon Board of Education from January third, two thousand and thirteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four end. Whereas Michael Petroselli has performed his duties as a member of the Kinnon Board of Education in the best interest of the students and citizens of the Kinnon School District. And whereas, as a result of his dedication as a member of the Kinnon Board of Education, Michael Petroselli has earned the highest respect and the deepest appreciation of the Kinnon School District, its students, staff, community, and administration. Now, therefore, be it resolved as follows. The Kinnon School District publicly acknowledges the dedication with which Michael Petroselli did faithfully and conscientiously perform his duties as members of the Kinnon Board of Education. The Board of Education wishes to commend and thank Michael Petroselli for his twelve years of dedicated service to the school district. Its students and staff extend their serious best wishes in his future endeavors. That the resolution shall become a permanent part of the minutes of the Kinnon School District Board of Education of Morris County. That the secretary be directed to cause a copy of this resolution to be appropriately reproduced and delivered to Mr. Michael Petroselli. Thank you very much, Mike.
I've been working with Mr. Petroselli for four years and I recognize that there just, it's just been awesome to have him. His twelve years that he's served and his knowledge and experience that he's given to the board and also his demeanor and just his even-tempered steadiness that I really felt especially during COVID was really instrumental for me as a new board member. And he was like, he was a mentor to me and a guide, and I have his phone number, so I will definitely be reaching out to him whenever I have any questions or any concerns. And there are things that come up that we sometimes face in a unique situation. And having him as on my speed dial has been really, I will keep that so I can keep asking him. And then there is one more thing I did want to recognize, one more person, is his wife, Jennifer Petroselli. I know without her support of him, and he had four kids that were going through school, he's, you know, the He's, you know, the twins, the boys are graduating this year, but it must have been a lot for them for all 12 years for him to be so involved. So Mrs. Petricelli, Jennifer, will you come up? We have some flowers for you. Sorry, Dr. Peter Hughes, I don't, I totally spaced your name. I'm so sorry. I also want to recognize you and the audience and all the help that you were to me as a new board member too. And thank you for coming. Really appreciate it. Mike, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. That was embarrassing. Just a few words of thanks because I know everybody here wants to get to the, to the recognition. So just wanted to say thank you, especially to my family, my wife and my sons who are here tonight and my daughters for, you know, kind of putting up with the last 12 years or so. So thank you for all the meetings and school events and all that kind of thing. Thank you to all the teachers and administrators. You know, I try to say this a lot at meetings, but I can't thank you guys enough for everything that you do. I mean, I think you have an appreciation for it when you're a parent, but you have such, so much more of an appreciation of it when you become a board member and you see all that work behind the scenes that happens, not just with the teachers, but with the administrators and everybody. So thank you for that. Thank you to my fellow board members, this board and, and the past boards. It's been, you know, a rough 12 years at times, the, the way Mr. Mango said it, but you know, all the selfless time and devotion that everybody puts into it. I appreciate that and, you know, all the, you know, good conversations and arguments and discussions that we've had. So I appreciate that. And thank you to all the community members who elected me four times. Don't know what you were thinking, but thank you for electing me and, and thank you for all your support over the years. Thank you very much.
This time, I want to call up Ms. Whitwer, our athletic director, for our full sports recognition. Ms. Whitwer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mango. First, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank the coaches for the job they do, the board for honoring our student athletes the way that they do. We're not going to waste a lot of time, we're going to get right to it. There's no one better to talk about their teams than their coaches, they know them best. We're going to start with Pearl Miller. We're going to start with Ben Contella, who's the cross-country coach. And David Jones.
First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Mango and the board for putting this together. This is a, a special thing for kids to be recognized, you know, for doing things outside of school and athletics. You know, these are the things that I think they'll remember as they get older. And, you know, one of the things that, when we talk about sports, and not many middle schools have sports. So I think when they do certain things like this, it builds a certain bond and something that they can carry on to the high school. I'd like to thank Mrs. Chegwin for all her help all the time when I have to ask her questions, coaches at the high school. I'd like to thank Ms. Whitwer here. She got thrown into the fire pretty quick when she came here in August and all of a sudden she's got to deal with my texts and emails. I'd like to thank Mr. Mangan and Ms. Yosefides for all their support in the building. And this handsome gentleman next to me, Mr. Jones, he volunteered his time this year helping out with the cross-country team. We had 50 kids on the team. I know a lot of them had some things going on tonight, but I'm so glad a lot of them came here. We had a, a pretty successful season. The girls were three and three overall, but I think one of the highlights of the year for them was going against Villa Walsh. Villa Walsh is a pretty good program. We lost them the first time around and then second time around, we wound up beating them. The boys were undefeated in the season, six and oh. And one of the big things was beating Mount Olive because Mount Olive's a big school. So little Kinnon went up there and we, we, we took it to Mount Olive, which was, was a nice thing. And, you know, when we had the counties, we, we placed the girls, placed fourth overall out of 12, and the boys placed fifth. When we did our grade races, and I had to pull up a card for this, usually I don't have a card, but you know, you get older, you got to figure all these things out. For the grade races, sixth grade girls, we had Callie Ferguson take 18th out of 117 girls. We had Julie Sun in the seventh grade take 29th out of 128. We had Emily Vedder take eighth grade, the eighth grade girls, 31 out of 114. For the boys, Joseph Deck, sixth grade, was 17th out of 128. Tomas Matea was fifth out of 152 kids. Jacob Gareth was here, was 26 out of 168. So that's a pretty big accomplishment. It's the whole county comes in, a lot of kids, and we performed very well with that. Jacob and Michaela were definitely leaders of the team this year. They led me through, you know, they were my captains. And whenever I needed to lean on people, those two are definitely two I can lean on. I just look forward to the future. Hopefully, a lot of them go up and run for Ms. Chegwin up at the high school. And looking forward to bigger and better things every year. Thank you very much.
Thank you to our cross-country team and Mr. Contella. Next, we'd like to bring up the girls soccer team coach, Stephen Gemma.
Thank you to the board, Mr. Mango, Ms. Whitwer, for having us here to speak about our season a little bit. I promised there was more than just Malin. I appreciate Malin for coming tonight. Not only was she the only one to come tonight, she was also the only sixth grader on the team. So that's a testament to who she is as a person and her hard work, so. Just to recap our season briefly, we had a very competitive season going up against schools like Mount Olive, West Essex, which obviously bigger schools, a lot of competition. And we were in very competitive games. We went into the county tournament as the sixth seed and probably the highlight of our season, upsetting Long Valley in penalty kicks to go on to the semifinals. So very exciting. I know the girls were really excited about that, that accomplishment. Eventually though, losing the semifinals to Paquana, who ended up winning the entire county tournament, but we went into that second half tied one to one, really giving them a good fight the whole way. So just as Mr. Contella said, I'm really hopeful for the future, looking forward to all that and to all the girls that are going up to KHS this next year, that they continue their soccer season and can do big things up there. Thank you.
Thank you, coach. Next, we'd like to bring up our boys soccer coach, Matt Goff.
So I'll have my guys come up real quick. First of all, thank you, everybody. Thank you to the board, Mr. Mango, Ms. Whitwer, Mr. Mangan, basically everybody. I'm kind of the Ted Lasso of the soccer program. This is my first year ever coaching soccer, but I tell you right now, I love it. And if there's ever an opportunity, I would love to keep doing it. This group of guys was great. I didn't know much about the past. I know that John, I think, told me the first game that they never haven't won in the last two years. So the bar wasn't that high for me, which is good. But they, they really fought and we ended up with three wins this year. So that's, that's a huge win. Their, their spirit, their dedication to the game, their enthusiasm, maybe sometimes too much enthusiasm, right, Logan? Was inspirational to me. Like I said, it was fresh, it was new, and I think, I think I fed a lot off of their energy as well. We, I mean, we really grew. They grew as players, as a team. And I know that, you know, Coach Rogers, who was kind of like my mentor, they're going to get a lot of good eighth graders coming up and then seventh graders and, you know, really supplying the, the high school with, with some good weapons for next year. Let's see, what else? So real quick, while you're here, we have Alex. Alex was one of our leading scorers and one of, this is one of those kids that, I don't know how, I don't know how they run as much as they do in soccer, I'll tell you that, man. But he was in and he never wanted to come out and, and I'm really proud of, of what he did. Logan, my little spitfire over here, only got one, one yellow card, so I guess that's, 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 that's a win for us. But seventh grader and really going to be a contribution to the team next year. He was more of a winger. Then we have John. We had like six Johns on the team, so he was nicknamed JJ. Defensive midfielder, but all of his knowledge of the game, I could really rely on him to be the leader in the defense. And then lastly, the two, the two crazy ones, the goalies, who I would, I would never ever want to be goalie because of all the, the pressure that's put on them. They shared the, the goal and they did a great job. They always kept their, their head up high and they really became the leaders of the team. So I just want to say thank you again and thank you guys for what a very memorable year. Thank you.
Thank you, coach. Next, we're going to move on to some of the Kinnon Athletics, high school athletics. We're going to bring up our girls tennis coach, Mark Lanzert.
Just before I start speechifying about tennis, I just want to let you not, guys, know in my spare time, I, I helped Jim Souls out with the bowling. And for the first time in the history of the program, we beat Monville tonight. And we rolled a record score. We had the highest score that we've ever scored, which was 3,027 pins. So good job, K Bowl. Right. Hello, board members, students and family members to our Fall Recognition Night. My name is Mark Lanzert and I am the Kinnon Tennis Coach. Last year, we reached the state sectional final for the sixth year in a row with a senior-laden team. This year, we returned only two varsity starters, our captains, Sarah Garg and Sophie Kemp. They did a great job over a difficult season, leading the team through practices and matches. Kinnon Girls Tennis always plays hard and we always play fair. I would like to recognize the four seniors from this year's team. Sarah and Sophie both received all-league recognition for the NJAC Liberty Division at first singles and second singles. In addition to our two captains, I would like to recognize Julia and Lexi Haynes. They stepped up for this year to play first doubles for us, including a win for us in the state sectional tournament. Julia and Lexi also received NJAC Liberty Division All-League honors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share our successes this year at the board meeting.
Thank you, coach. Next, I'd like to bring up our girls volleyball coach, Coach Stephanie Fink.
Hi, everybody. Just like everybody else, I would like to thank the board, thank Ms. Whitwer and everybody that came to join us tonight. You wouldn't know it, but we do have 35 girls in the volleyball program. Thankfully, we had Soloni here tonight to join us. It is Tuesday and Thursday is a big club night, which we push kids to play club. So that's where I would say 80% of them are tonight, but they are missing what is a, a great night to recognize our student athletes. This year, fortunately, we were able to fundraise the money to have a freshman team, so we were able to keep all 35 girls that tried out. We had 10 freshman players in the program that were there and had a great season and they're able to push through and get tons of playing time and tons of experience to move on to the JV and varsity levels next year. We had a full squad on JV with an experienced, we call our coach Michelle, who is here, who is kind of the mother that leads them and teaches them skills, but off, off the court stuff too, how to be a team player. And then we have them ready for the varsity program. Struggled a little bit this year. We did have a big win over Jefferson, who ended up going on to win the state championship. So it was there. The skills were there, the players were there. We just needed one more year to get there, but we have Soloni, who's a returning varsity player for us, along with some other players that I'm hoping that next year is going to turn it around a little bit and bring home a state championship. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach Fink. Next, I'd like to bring up our cross-country coach, Coach Laura Chegwin Jacobs, and any of her staff that is here as well.
I'm on a two-minute thing, I got the stopwatch right, Matt. So, all right, I'll be brief. I know I'm usually not, but one thank you again to the board and everybody that is here to recognize the athletes tonight from the fall season. I want to, uh, yeah, I can't talk, sorry.
You're good, you're good.
Sorry. The pressure of the two minutes.
You're on a minute thirty-seven.
I want to thank Coach R, and we also had Coach Angelina this year, who did her internship with us. They obviously keep me sane and tell me when to, to cut it out with my antics. But honestly, we had a really great season. As I say every year, I'm really blessed to get to coach these group of guys and the girls. Unfortunately, again, everybody's busy with their winter seasons and commitments, so luckily we were able to have these four gentlemen come to represent our team tonight and none of the ladies were able to make it. But overall, our conference, our boys tied for the championship and went four and one. And our girls, I would say our performance, our record doesn't reflect our performance. We didn't have a lot of numbers, so there were some. We just didn't have seven girls on the line, depending on injuries, but they ended up finishing one, one and five. We had a couple invitationals where our boys took home first place at the Garrett Mountain Invitational and also down at Dream Park. All right, that was a special road trip we took, could have gone to Dream Park for one of our seniors that wanted to head down there. We've never raced at that course. So they won and our girls actually placed third there. So we had a really nice performance down there. Our NJAC Championship meet, so it's all the small schools in the conference, we were, the boys were third overall and then ninth in the county, and girls were 18th in the county. At our state sectional meet, boys took third, not by much. We, we honestly just, the, from first to third place, it was probably a total of 11 points. So we were right there again, just as we always are in the sectional championships. And our girls took fourth. So both teams moved on to stage, which has become an expectation at this point in time for our program. We, we expect that we are going to go to sectionals and we are going to move on to stage both programs. And they came through on that and I, we were really super happy and excited for them. And then overall, the state group meet, the boys finished sixth and the girls finished 15th. So we had a really solid season overall and some honors that we had postseason are all conference winners. First team was Will Portman, second team was Jaden Herr, Henry Manton, and Kiran Fitzgerald, Hope Syrenides, honorable mention, Matt Baldino and Miranda Drays. And Henry Manton also got all group, group one, third team. So that's the whole state and the whole group. So that was quite an accomplishment. Super excited for next year. We're going to miss, we have a big group of seniors leaving and we've had a lot of seniors over the past few years that were really instrumental in our success, but we have a lot, a great class staying. And I know Mr. Contella, you know, telling me about the eighth graders coming up, super excited to get them to come up to the program and on the boys and girls side and continue our success. And I wish everybody a happy holiday season and best luck with the winter seasons. Thank you.
Thank you, coach. And the cross-country team, next, we'd like to bring out our football coach, Coach Dustin Grande, any of his players or coaches that would like to join him.
Thanks to the minis, to the administration again. This is an awesome, to honor all these student athletes in the programs. I'd like to thank my coaching staff. Coach Calabella is here, he's like my right-hand man here. But we have eight coaches, other coaches to make a 10-person staff and we couldn't do anything without that. Football's a very intricate sport where you need kind of specialization at each of the positions. And, you know, applaud my coaches for what we've become and what we've been able to accomplish. We set the bar, we've raised the bar the last couple of years in the program. And we felt about this year, in the middle of the year, a lot of disappointment because we set the bar high with a lot of goals and we didn't hit those goals initially. And, you know, it was a little bit of a setback for us. And, and one of the great things about sports and one of the reasons why I coach, and I know all the other coaches are probably the same way, it's not what happens when, you know, times are tough. That's what makes, you know, you the person you are, how you reflect and how you get through that. And our team, you know, I applaud them, they came back down the stretch, winning three of the last four games to finish five and five. And... of the last four games to finish 5-5. And that is the 19th time out of 62 times, 62 years of Kinnon football, that we've had at least five wins. And the first time in school history that we've won five or more games three years in a row. So, we didn't accomplish all our goals. We finished third in the division, but, you know, we raised the bar and very proud of these guys, of how they competed and what they did as a team. A lot of honors. We've received 10 guys on all-conference teams. And the first one on it was a three-time All-Conference Award winner, Andrew Stickley, on the offensive line, as well as a two-time Morris County All-Offense Player. Also, Soren Parada was a two-time wide receiver, first-team All-Conference. Here tonight, step up Zach, Zachary Grande. He was a two-time first-team All-Conference. He had 1,400 yards this year and 22 touchdowns. First-team All-Conference Defense, Karen Kiesel, step up. Kiran had 45 tackles. He's a defensive lineman. That's a lot of tackles. He had eight tackles for a loss and seven sacks to make first-team All-Conference. First-team All-Conference, unfortunately, Alex hurt his knee during the season. He battled through to finish the last two games, and then in basketball, he hurt the same knee. So, we're hoping a quick recovery for Alex. But he finished on the field. Very proud of him. 53 tackles and nine tackles for losses this season. Also, we had second-team offense, Matt Siciliano. Second-team defense, Chase Murphy, Landon Smith, and Wyatt Cisco. And we had honorable mention, Henry Evans. So, really proud of these guys and all the commitment they put in and all the effort. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Coach Grande. And our football team, next, we'd like to bring up our boys' soccer coach and players, Coach Rick Rogers.
Good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, I'm Rick Rogers, the new head coach for the boys' varsity soccer team this past season. Before we honor the efforts of our players, I wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation to the administration at the high school, Mr. Mango, and the board for the opportunity to lead this program. Kinnon Soccer is where I want to be. My goal is to develop this program into a consistent winner, while at the same time, more importantly, develop my players into strong and successful young men. The boys' JV season was highlighted by the growth and development of the players under Coach Jabez Thomas. As the season progressed, freshman Lucas Di Lorenzo and sophomore Fitz Hill Warner both earned mid-season call-ups to the varsity squad. During their time with the varsity team, both players earned valuable playing time and played well. Lucas, who's here tonight, drew a foul in the box against Hanover Park and hammered home his penalty shot for his first career varsity goal. The JV boys notched impressive wins against Walk Hill Valley and Butler. Sophomore Robert Marches, I'll butcher his name, sorry. Robert M. scored the team's lone hat-trick of the season. The varsity team started the season slow, but came on strong in the second half of the year, finishing with a 7, 9, and 3 record, and the ninth seed in the state sectional tournament. The varsity team handed previously undefeated Walk Hill Valley their first loss with an impressive 5-0 final score. Jason Osterman played an important role in the team's success with 148 saves, seven shutouts, and earning second-team All-Conference, third-team All-County, and North Two All-State honors. Javel Kang led the team in scoring with 16 goals and earned first-team All-Conference, second-team All-County, and North Two All-State honors. Joseph Mendy earned first-team All-Conference and All-County Honorable Mention recognition. Junior and returning captain David Loza earned second-team All-Conference and All-County Honorable Mention honors. Leo Dmitrikal was recognized as All-Conference Honorable Mention as a sophomore. In addition to these honors, there are a number of players who had great seasons and contributed in a variety of ways. Senior Tommy Ike had a heck of a second half of the season while playing at multiple different positions and doing a great job of filling in where we needed him. Harrison Cornet had a solid and consistent season, starting at centerback, and was an exemplary teammate. Matt Wable was another exemplary teammate and someone who helped guide his teammates with the transition from the previous coaching staff to this year's. Ben Klinger, Jack Doty, and Matt Wagner were also other seniors who had solid seasons as well. And finally, the Colts looked to build upon this year's progress moving forward into next season behind a strong core of Leo Dmitrikal, returning junior captain, or to-be senior captain, David Loza, Alex Tepnawski, Michael Lesko, Fitz Hill Warner, Lucas Di Lorenzo, Dylan Castellano Smith, and Matt Weiss. Thank you all and have a great holiday season.
Thank you, Coach Rogers, and our boys' soccer team. Finally, we'd like to bring up our girls' soccer coaching staff, Coach Stephen Racine, his staff, and players that are here tonight.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the administration of the district, the Board of Education, our new athletic director, the school administration, for having the opportunity to come back for my third time as the head girls' soccer coach at Kinnon. I can assure you, there will not be a fourth time, because I will be dead. So, this is the last go-around. I'd like to thank my assistant coaches, Dana Solieri. Dana played at Paquannic and liked to send me pictures of when she used to score goals against Kinnon. So, we kept her anyway. And Griffin Hall, who's been a member of the coaching staff and was, helped us in the transition tremendously. I'd also like to thank Coach Rogers and Coach Grande. When you have three teams that all want to use the same field, and it all works every time, these guys were awesome in terms of sharing the facility. So, thank you very much. It made everything work well and smoothly. We had a good year with limited numbers. We had 21 players in the program, two who had never played soccer before. So, it was a bit of a challenge at times. We ended up 15, 5, and 1, and won the conference championship for the first time in 10 years with a 9-0 and 1 conference record. And we kind of ran out of gas and healthy bodies at the end of the year. But I think the team went as far as they could. We had some good accomplishments individually. We had two young women set school records. Taylor Mulch, sophomore, established a new sophomore class record with 25 goals and 18 assists, and also tied the single-season sophomore record for assists in a game with four. Senior Alessia Cerullo set a new record for the girls' soccer team for career goals at 91. Set a single-season record for unassisted goals with 15, and tied a single-season assist record of five assists in one game, which she shares with my daughter. So, we had several players earn postseason recognition. One of our captains, Kelly Donaldson, is here. And she earned honorable mention All-Conference. We had three freshmen make second-team All-Conference, Olivia Kerzacki, Lauren Mortimer, and Grace Oleenka. That's obviously very good for the future. And we had three players make first-team All-Conference, Alessia Cerullo, Taylor Mulch, and Abby Talbot. In the Morris County Girls Soccer Coaches Association, Kelly Donaldson and Abby Talbot were honorable mention. Second team was Taylor Mulch, and first team was Alessia Cerullo. And in the New Jersey Girls State Soccer Coaches Association, we had two players selected to some level of the All-State team. We don't find out until the banquet in January. So, Alessia Cerullo and Taylor Mulch were selected to the All-State team. It was a good season and transition season, and I'm looking forward to next year. We lose one starting player and everybody else is back. And hopefully, some of the eighth graders, thank you, Coach, for the good scouting report. Hopefully, they'll be with us next year as well. Thank you all.
Thank you, Coach Racine, and our girls' soccer program. At this time, any student athletes, coaches, parents, players who would like to take pictures, Ms. Trombetta will be in the hallway. The banner's just outside the hallway. You can take pictures with your team out in the hallway. I'm going to pass this back over to Mr. Mango for the next part of the presentation.
Go ahead and get started. Our next update is on the district absenteeism presentation.
Okay, good evening, welcome. I am here to talk about chronic absenteeism. So tonight during the board meeting, the board, you will be approving corrective action plans for chronic absenteeism. So I just wanted to give a little context behind it and highlight some things for parents that are watching. We will make this available on our website, just to give everybody some more information. So what is chronic absenteeism? So we had to create, as I just mentioned, action plans because our chronic absenteeism rate is 10% or more in each of our buildings. So chronic absenteeism is when a student is considered chronically absent if the student misses 10% or more of school days in session for which the student was enrolled. Obviously, this contributes to low academic achievement, which I'm going to share some data with you in the next couple of slides, so you'll see how that is directly impacting our students. And attending school every day increases the chances of success in school and in life. Makes sense. So how is chronic absenteeism calculated in New Jersey? These are the two formulas. So for a student, it's the number of days absent divided by the number of days present plus the number of days absent. If this number is equal to or greater than 10%, then that student is considered chronically absent. Now, the school chronically absentee rate, it's the number of chronically absent students divided by the number of students enrolled. And that's how the state comes up with those numbers. So here's our district data. In '22, '23, we were well over 10% in each of the buildings. Last school year, '23, '24, still above 10%. Stony Brook was a little bit lower. Nonetheless, they still had Mrs. Utel create an action plan because it's still important that we remain consistent district-wide. And being at 8.7%, we're still high. So best practice to create an action plan, which we will review at the end of this school year to determine whether we need to continue with our action plan or not, or if the absentee rate has gotten better. So here are some of the impacts. Out of the 206 students identified as being chronically absent, 47% of them were identified on state assessments as not graduation-ready on the NJGPA, or did not meet expectations on the NJSLA, or had at least one failing grade. So it definitely impacts academics. It definitely impacts school performance. Oh, so this is why I wanted to highlight some of these things, because I think we need to get information out to parents and have parents understand the importance of consistent daily attendance, because it definitely is impacting the students' learning. 25% of those same group of students, now when I look into this year's attendance rates, when I checked in November, 25% of those students already are receiving attendance warnings, which means they've already hit at least the five-day-out-of-school mark. So that is pretty alarming. So we're still, you know, just a couple of months in, and this was November, just a couple of weeks ago, already hitting that five-absentee mark. So how is this data used? This is used in a couple of different ways. The state collects this information. The federal government collects this information. So this is included in our ESA accountability system. This is an indicator of school quality. You remember that we also went through the CUSAC review. So CUSAC is your quality assurance for the district, and that's used in an indicator as well. So they do check chronic absenteeism rates, and that does get marked against the school district. Chronically absentee rates report at the district school and student group level in the annual school performance reports, which those are published online every year. And the NJDOE is required to report attendance data to the U.S. Department of Education. So as I said, it goes to the state, it also goes to the federal government. And this all impacts, we receive grants. We receive state grants, we receive federal grants. So these things could potentially impact the amount of grant money we could receive in the future. So I think information for parents to know out there, there are state-excused absences. So there are absences that are considered completely excused in terms of the state. So if your child is absent for any one of these seven reasons, then it doesn't count towards their attendance rate, it doesn't count towards the school's chronic absenteeism rate either. So it's a religious observance, college visits for juniors and seniors, up to three a year, Take Our Children to Work Day, participation in Observance of Veterans Day, participation in district Board of Ed membership activities, closure of a busing district that prevents the transportation from getting the child to school, and participation in one civic event. This is for students in grades 6 through 12. This is a recent addition to the list of state excuses. So we also have locally excused absences. So aside from the seven state-excused absences, you didn't see sickness on there. So obviously, kids get sick, kids can't come to school when they're sick, so we locally excuse that. So what we're doing, and what we also are approving tonight, is Regulation 5200, which deals directly with attendance. So if you look, parents at home, if you look on our policies and you look up the attendance policy, you'll see definitions of what an unexcused absence means, what an excused absence means. But if you look at 5200 as the regulation, we are adopting, we made some revisions to it. We are placing in their student absent, or, you know, student illness or injury with a doctor's note, and we ask that that doctor's note comes within 72 hours of the absence. So, which means a student, if they're sick throughout the year and you go to the doctor, we do need that note right away. It can't be a matter of where the student is absent an excessive amount of time during the school year, and then in June, you're going to try to go to the doctor and get notes. It doesn't work like that. We need those notes right after the student returns to school. Obviously, death within the family, we will excuse. And then high school specific, we know a lot of students go on the day of their birthday for their DMV exam, for their license exam, so we will excuse that with proper documentation. And then if the student has required attendance in court. So these are locally excused absences, meaning we won't hold a student to it, we will not prevent the student from moving along, retention, we will not, the student will not lose credit if they are excused under our guidelines for a locally excused absence, because these are the things that make sense, these are realistic. And obviously, if a student is out and they're not feeling well, most important thing is for the parents to just communicate with the school and share with us why the student is out, if they're out for an extended period of time. Again, the most important thing is to communicate with the school, to let the principal know, let the nurse know. On the real-time information system, if you're noting it that way, please just communicate the reason for your student's absence. This is just citing the mandate, so this is just stating that we must develop the action plan because our numbers are 10% or greater in each of our school buildings, so I won't read that whole thing to you. I did release a parent survey, so part of our action plan was to include parent responses. So I sent out a parent survey. I want to thank all the parents who took the time to respond to the survey. The information was very helpful in putting this together, so we had about 457 responses. And the top reason of why parents believe students are chronically absent was illness, which yes, makes sense. A lot of parents responded. I left long answers, so parents can clarify even further. And yes, obviously, if a child is sick, it's best for them to stay home, but please keep an eye on, you know, really what is holding the student back from school. If they're fever-free, if they're not getting sick to their stomach, if they're able, if they're not contagious, then yes, you can send them to school. The second reason, though, which was pretty alarming, was vacation. So in a lot of the parent responses, parents were very forthcoming and very vocal about wanting to take vacation during the school year because rates are lower at off times. So, you know, that's just, for that being one of the second, you know, the second highest reason, I think that's pretty concerning. So I think as a district, we can do much better. I think that if we just really be mindful of our vacation times, get our kids, keep our kids in school when they should be in school, yes, obviously, things come up, but I do think we can do better, because seeing over 20% at our elementary buildings, chronic absenteeism, I think is, again, very concerning. And you saw the statistics. It really does impact performance, and it really does impact academics. So again, here are some of the other reasons. Doctors' and dentist's appointments, yes, we all struggle with that. I think, you know, I'm seeing a lot too, even with my own children, sometimes doctor's offices don't stay open late, sometimes they're not there in the weekends, so we understand it. But also keep in mind, if you do have to go to a doctor or dentist appointment, you know, maybe try to do that first thing or last thing part of the day, because it's important as long as they're in school for most of the day, then that's great. The more that they're in school, the better, so the quicker you can get them back. Parents also cite mental health, just giving their kids a break. This was an answer, parents do not care if students miss school. Maybe that's a perception out there, that maybe at certain levels, parents say, okay, it's, you know, it's just a day, it's not a big deal, and maybe, maybe that's just the perception. And also, a lot of parents mention extracurricular activities. If you're away at tournaments for sports or any other extracurricular activity, that impacts attendance as well. So steps we will take, and this is pretty much summarized in each of the action plans that the schools wrote. I didn't pull up each action plan. The board has it in your attachment for approval, because they all pretty much say the same thing. What we will do is, we're going to provide information to parents. We are generating letters in our real-time system, so when a student misses an excessive amount of school days, they will receive notification. So it's just a reminder, and parents will receive those at the five-day, 10-day, 15, and 18-day mark. So it's just letting you know, your child has missed this many days, these are unexcused absences, please keep that in mind. We will, we have made the notification system easier, so I know a lot of parents can note it right in real-time. I think this is especially true at the upper levels. At the elementary level, like I said, it's just very important to just communicate. If your child is homesick, they don't seem to be getting better, they need to stay out longer, again, just communicate with the school. Because those absences, even if a child is homesick, let's say with a stomach virus, sometimes you're not going to go to the doctor for every little thing, and we understand that. But again, just let the school know and just keep us informed, so we know the reason why the student is out of school. But they do still count towards the overall chronic absenteeism rate. And that's why illness is not part of the state-excused absence, because illness still does count in our chronic absenteeism rate. So it's just something to be mindful of and keep a watch on. We will, as I said, provide attendance information on our website. This will be posted, so parents can view this for information. And we will continue to create action plans should we need to. If our numbers do not fall below that 10%, we will continue to take a look at our action plans within each school, with the principals, revise our action plans as needed, and make any adjustments from that point forward. So hopefully, like I said, getting this information out there, I'm hoping to see a positive change, because when I, again, when I see the correlation between our days out and our chronic absenteeism rates, and then how those specific students are faring in school and are struggling and not doing well and not performing and not meeting those expectations, that's alarming to me. So again, I think we can all do better. I think we could try a lot harder, pay attention to the days our students are out of school, and I think we'll be in a much better position, hopefully, at the end of the school year when we review our numbers. And I think that was it. Any questions? Nope? John? On an action plan? So that's a good question. Are students individually put on an action plan? So this is part of it. As we're tracking student attendance, we should come up with action plans for students. So if we already have a student who is nearing, you know, the 10-day mark out of school, that's a good idea for our teams within our building. So we have our, I've talked so much about RTI, I'm the RTI lady. So our RTI teams can have a discussion with the parents. Parents should be brought in after they're notified, and yes, an action plan can be created for that student based on attendance, because it could be a motivation thing. It could be maybe the student had a rough go with a couple illnesses, and now from being out of school, I know with my kids, when they're out one day of school, they get very overwhelmed, because just in one day, you can miss a lot, especially at the high school level. You can miss a whole lot in one day. So it could be a matter of, students are feeling overwhelmed, and you feel like sometimes when you're out, you can't catch up, and they can. So we're keeping an eye on it, and we can have a meeting, and we could create an action plan for the students, so that we could say, hey, it's okay, we're, don't worry, you're going to be fine, we're going to catch you up, and here are the supports we're going to put in place for you. So I think there's a lot we could do on that end. John, you had a question?
Yeah, did you have any, did you have any data for, like, prior to COVID, how the absentee rates were?
No, I'll have to look back at the, the school performance reports, but I think across the board, and that was from the state report too, citing, yes, we know that since COVID, there has been a shift statewide. So when what they told us in our county meeting was, this is a big problem in New Jersey, 70% of the school districts in New Jersey were in the same boat as us. So 70% of school districts in our state are 10% or higher chronic absenteeism. So and think about it, I remember when schools reopened, you know, the following year after COVID, I know where Mr. Mango and I were, we were in session, we were in person, and it still was a very tricky time, so we were still contact tracing. Students were out for 10, 14 days at a clip, so that definitely impacted. And now I think parents, I mean, this is just my assumption, my perception, I think parents just are much more cautious. You know, when a student has a stuffy nose, and they're congested, and they're not feeling right, you always, parents always err on the side of caution. So, and I do recognize that, a lot of parents mentioned that in the survey as well. We err on the side of caution. I keep my kid home. At the start of a cold, I know when they're getting sick, and I keep them away so that they don't infect others. So I appreciate that too, that was, those were a lot of responses on the survey. So we appreciate that too, and we all understand that, which is why, again, the most important thing is communication. If you're communicating with the building, and we know the situation, we know what's going on, then we can work with you, basically. But yeah, there's definitely a shift since COVID, but I can pull those numbers for sure. All good? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Finance, Facilities, and Security, Carl?
Yep. All right, so first up, we did discuss the high school gym floor, which Mr. Mango already updated as part of the ongoing district goals and Mr. Mango's initiatives. You know, we discussed some ongoing, potentially obsolete systems within the district-wide areas. Nothing officially yet, but they are collecting top three recommendations, which are potentially on the budget for next are potentially on the budget for next year, so that's all being sort of worked out now. On the agenda is accepting of a donation for the KHS baseball field, so this is Hertz Landscaping, can donate ground improvement, time, and material, just for those improvements. We discussed a number of upgraded security things, such as some things at Cisco, some surveillance upgrades at Stony Brook Hill and PRM, some upgrades to Lens, 3M Films, those kinds of things. So a number of different, just general security updates were discussed as well. Where is the other one on here? Also on the, on the agenda for approval is LightPath Education Services, which is an internet thing for a three-year agreement with them. And let's see, I'm jumping around my own notes here to kind of consolidate them. And I believe that is it. Yeah, so we did meet on the 5th.
Thanks, Carl. Personnel negotiations, Mike?
I, I think Dave made it easy on me for my last meeting because there wasn't a lot for personnel, but for the, for the items that didn't go across all the committees, we talked about some new job descriptions, which I think was actually on all the committees. We talked about the K5 lead teacher recommendations, which I think went very well, all the choices of that went well. And then the other minor thing was some changing hourly rates that we talked to that are on the agenda as well, so it was an easy meeting for personnel.
Thanks, Mike. Kelly, education?
Sure, so the Education Student Activities Committee met on December 5th. So Ms. Whitwer and our new baseball coach, his name is Mr. DiMaggio, believe it or not, so I feel like we're destined for good things with our baseball. They, they walk the fields, they're trying to get ready for the season, they talked, they met with Hertz Landscaping, who was very generous and is getting the field ready for the boys to be able to play. So that was an exciting update. We also had a presentation from Mrs. McLean, who's one of the counselors and the principal from PRM. We, this has happened multiple times, but we always say how much we like it when there are problems in district for the staff to come to us with solutions. And we have had trending, you know, an uptick in our HIB numbers, which is happening consistently in all towns. It's not just our town, but it is trending. And so Mrs. McLean had a presentation for us that she wants to share with all of the students at PRM moving forward. It basically talks about what is a HIB, you know, because a lot of the students, if a HIB comes up, they have a lot of questions afterwards, and we feel like, you know, we could just get in front of this and be a little bit more preventative with it and just share, listen, this is a gift to you, this is what's expected of you as a student, you can, this is how you need to behave when you're at school, and nothing will happen, and hopefully, our HIB numbers will go down because of it. The videos were, they were made by a teacher in another district, but Ms. McLean is able to kind of individualize it and make it work for our district, but they were really great videos, developmentally appropriate for the ages that they were at, and it was really cool because there were a lot of celebrities that said, you know, I was bullied, it was a part of my life, and I went on to have a wonderful life despite it. So I think that's a really important message, too, for kids at that age to heal, to hear. So that was exciting, and we're, we're really looking forward to that getting rolled out. They're going to be talking more about it at the PRM forum that's going to be in January. So we also have somebody in town that wants to be our SOR presenter, which we're really excited about. Her name is Maria Palmer, and she's a mom with two daughters in district, and she just had a really exciting, wonderful life that she wound up writing a book about, and it just really personifies overcoming unexpected difficulties, showing resilience, and it's, I, I think it's really great when we have somebody from town that we're able to showcase what that's, we're excited. We approved a PRM health textbook, we approved a AP European textbook, we have a social studies pilot class in grade four over at Stony Brook. The teachers are really excited about this because the curriculum was designed by teachers, and it aligns perfectly to the standards. It also provides a lot of cross-curricular learning opportunities, which is great, you know, social studies is a great subject to be able to do that. We are still working on our KHS robotics club, so more news on that hopefully in the future. And we, we have really exciting news about our lead teachers. We have some teachers at each grade level that wanted to step up, take on more responsibility, take on a leadership position, be a liaison to administration, mentor their fellow teachers, share resources, tips, tricks with class management and lesson plans, and just be the go-to person in their grade to provide answers to questions. And so we have most, I think almost everybody's here tonight. At the kindergarten level, we have Ms. Melissa Masodre. At the first grade level, we have Joan Molay. At the second grade level, we have Mallory O'Connell. At the third grade level, we have Laura Gannat. At the fourth grade level, we have Susan Giuliano. And at the fifth grade level, we have Lori Bruce. So that's really exciting, and I know that your counterparts and your peers are very excited about you stepping into this role, so best of luck, and thank you so much. We also talked about 2025 meeting dates, and we talked about merging the Citizens Advisory and the Community Relations. We just had a conversation about that. I know more information will be following, but we talked about the pros and the cons of doing that, and I think a lot of people were in favor. We just talked about just district-wide realignment potential and possibilities.
Thanks, Kelly. Policy, John?
Yeah, I have a confession to make. I actually went to the high school concerts, so Jen's going to do it.
I heard it was good. It's good. Okay, for policy, we've been looking at a couple different policies relating to attendance, early dismissal, late arrival, and then regulations that go along with those, and then any changes that might need to be reflected in the handbook. Paying attention that we want to have consistency between the policy, the regulation, and the handbook, and then however it's carried out. So we were looking at policy 5230, 525514. You'll see the changes proposed in today's agenda for first reading. Thank you.
Don't thank me yet.
We also talked about advanced placement exams. We've been talking about this, we continued the conversation. We're talking about possibly doing some type of reimbursement for families who are, of students who are taking multiple AP exams, and giving some type of incentive of a score of three, maybe four. We were, that was a discussion that we were having, and how many exams to reimburse over the course of the student's career. And then we were discussing the impact it would have financially on the district, and so we were asking for a little bit better numbers on what that impact might be so that we can prepare budget-wise to be able to do something along those lines, but also be fiscally responsible. So that is more coming with that. Let's see, what else? We came up with a consistent time for four hours for a student to be in school, to be considered, to be able to have attended school, and then be able to be part of activities later in the school day. This can affect athletics, or, or school dances, or any other kind of like activities. We just wanted to be consistent with that. And then we continued our conversation with any of the lunch privileges for underclassmen, and we wanted our, again, our policies and regulations to reflect that. We feel that the lunch privilege is a privilege for seniors, and it should continue. We talked about the, the chronic absenteeism, like Ms. Thomas was explaining, and the different plans for that. We reviewed a parent observation form and a policy 9241 for any parent that's interested in observing in the classroom, just to have consistent rules to, to protect everyone involved and, and keep it a positive event. We went over the board, future Board of Ed meeting dates, again, talked about Community Relations, Citizens Advisory, and then, again, in the future, potential for district realignment, to be able to use space better, to be able to use funds better, and, again, just a discussion to see what is on the horizon.
So the, the changes to the handbook, which I saw were in yellow, right? That was just aligning the times, the four hours, because I know there were two different, yeah, because there were some like that had three, some, okay, all right, okay. Right.
Everything's for first reading.
First reading, right. Well, the, the handbook's not for first reading, is it? Revised, okay. All right. Delegates, do we have anything from school boards, New Jersey school boards?
No, school boards was quiet.
Morris County, they didn't meet, did they?
They did meet last week, and I didn't attend that, so.
Okay. Anything from the legislature? They quiet?
Yesterday, the governor signed the Freedom to Read Act in the library in Hamilton, I think. So in one year, the Department of Education is going to pass policies down that we then have to implement a policy, affects school libraries and books. Also, last week, the U.S. Department of Education issued a big recommendation to school districts all over the country. So this is not a mandate, it's just the U.S. Department of Education kind of saying what we've been saying for over a year, to say, you should have a policy, or multiple policies about students and cellphone use. So one of them is a big recommendation to say, no cellphones in school, so that's coming from the U.S. We're already ahead of that. But then also, one of the recommendations had to do with really helping children and the families that they're a part of to wrestle through digital citizenship, and we're already moving in that direction as well. So that's not new for us, except to say that in the environment that we're in legislatively, like, they're all catching up, and they're all saying, yeah, we're going the right way, so.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. Morris County Educational Services Commission? January, right, okay. So Community Relations and KEA, do you want to speak about that?
So we're still working on what this is going to look like, but the general consensus is to combine the Community Relations with Citizens Advisory, so that it's a better use of people's time, and it's kind of like more of a one-stop shop to be able to have discussions, to be able to learn about whatever's going on in the district, rather than having like repetitive, various nights of different information. We still need to, the Community Relations Committee needs to just meet to kind of really hammer down what that looks like, so that we can have some type, some type of plan, you know, to move forward. And then, I'm imagining that it makes sense to then initiate that with the new year because, you know, that's one more.
And actually, I, that actually might make sense in that board retreat thing that I had talked about, because there was ideas with communicating with the, the community and getting more information out to people, that maybe all of that comes together at once, because everybody had a lot of points in our self-evaluation, that I think maybe we can, as a board, kind of fine-tune those and then bring them to that committee, and then redo that in the new year. I think that's a great idea. So thanks for, for that, Jen. Okay. Anything else? K cares, and KEF, we're still have no real movement on that. All right. Petitions and hearings of citizens on agenda items? Anybody has anything for agenda items? Nope? Okay. Anything? Nope. Okay, so for agenda items A through D, I'd like a motion for a roll call on a block vote for agenda items A through D.
Motion for A through D. Second.
Okay. Discussion. Anybody have anything on any of these?
I did have a question about the HIBs and where they, or I hear that was under policy.
Yeah, it's policy D1.
I'd like to abstain from that if possible.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's possible.
We couldn't hear you on this side.
She, she wants to, the HIB D1, she wants to abstain from. Anybody have anything else? Okay. All right, so Ms. Francisco, will you pull the board, please?
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes, with my noted exception, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perella?
Yes.
Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Mr. Petroselli?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes. Okay, for item E on the agenda, committee of the whole, don't have anything, unfinished business? Anybody have any unfinished business?
What about the retreat on the 20th, or the meeting together on the 20th?
Yeah, I, I need to resend that out. I actually have something I forgot, I forgot about. That was on my calendar, so.
Friday, the 20th?
Yeah.
I just wrote it, I didn't reply to you.
Yeah. I didn't actually get a lot of replies, and so it, and then I forgot and booked something, so. So, and Mike actually said he wouldn't mind coming back after reorg to help us out, so I think we're going to take him up on that. One last meeting.
And just.
I do have his note, well, he did write stuff down, so, I mean, I don't know who it was, but he had, it's, there are notes in there, so.
Just remember that our reorg is the 7th.
The 7th.
January 7th, Tuesday the 7th. Over the, the holiday break, I'll send some notes just about, you know, some dates, because we're going to come out of the break and the new year swinging. And at the January 28th public meeting, Mrs. Thomas is going to present the elective surveys to our students, grade six to 11. That'll steer us on one end, going towards the budget and the position control roster, and then also we'll continue on with facilities. I do think we're going to probably, this year, more than the last two years, need solo breakout committee meetings, like just a night of Education Student Activities, a night of FFS, a night of personal negotiations. There's a lot happening, so, yeah, I just wanted to get that out there now. The 7th is reorg, the 28th is the public. In the middle, we're going to have, it could be multiple committee meetings, so, and let's hope that there's no snow.
Well, I'm gonna.
And the school calendar as well, the draft school calendar. Mrs. Soffin, I'll have that to your end for January at some point after it rolls through committee for next year as well.
And we also have, we were going to do a cellphone survey rate.
Yes, that's going to go out.
That's going to go up before the break, or in January?
Right at the, right as soon as we come back.
Okay, okay. No, you're right, you're right, you're right, that's true. Okay, anybody, any other unfinished business? Okay. The new business, we have next year's board meeting dates, so we all looked at those already. Any comments? Correspondence, do we have anything online, Jay? Do we have any letters or anything? Barbara? No? Okay. Petitions and hearing citizens, not agenda items?
I just wanted to congratulate our new team leaders, to say we're happy for you in this position, and to thank the board for your support in making that happen. I think it's a vital role, and they're going to be great advocates for their grade levels. Second, I just wanted to wish all of you a wonderful holiday season on behalf of the KEA. It's been a lot of hard work in 2024, and we're looking forward to a great many things to come in 2025. And lastly, thank you to Mr. Petroselli. It feels like an end of an era, and should you write a book, it will be a bestseller of all the things that you've experienced on the board. It's, it's been a wonderful ride with you, and, and we appreciate your support, and you advocating for our teachers, and this great district, and all of you, all the things you've done along the way, and it's been fun watching from, from our side, and you have big shoes to fill, for sure. And we thank you all, and again, have a wonderful holiday season with your families, may your celebrations be joyful and healthy, and it's a great new year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Okay, board member comments? Want to go first?
Sure. Just echoing some of that, in the holiday season, you know, thank you to everybody for all the hard work in the first couple months, and, you know, this stage doesn't get a lot of talk, and we talk a lot about the gym floor over there, but the floor up here has a lot of action, especially, you know, this month, you know, so last week there were a couple concerts here, this coming 4- There's coming for next week on this stage with a lot of young people. I mean, you put those groups together, and you have hundreds of kids that all come together at a place and a time bigger than any one team that, you know, comes out to get celebrated. So a lot of hard work's gone into that and really showcasing our kids. So thank you for that to the parents and the teachers and the, everybody that's involved. And didn't want to, didn't want to spend so much time, because I know Mike is, you know, like a private person, but what I was going to say was, you know, a lot like a keel of a boat. You know, it's underneath the boat, and you never see it. But it's one of the most important pieces of the boat, because without the keel, it's not going to move, and it's not going to move in a straight line. And, you know, for the wisdom and the experience that you've had and that you shared with me personally, you know, I just want to thank you for keeping us, you know, moving in ways that a lot of people never get to see or experience. And you've had, you know, your influence has pointed us in a direction and kept us moving. And I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I definitely need to recognize Mr. Petroselli. Mike, I had the blessing of sitting next to you at my first meeting, where I felt like a deer in headlights. And you just really took me in and just in a very kind and genuine way, explained things and told me what to do and got me through it. And you just have a wonderful way of knowing so very much about so very many things and just explaining it thoroughly and with just wonderful humility and respect. And I really enjoyed working with you. Even when we didn't agree, I feel like we were always very respectful. And I've just enjoyed the time learning from you. And thank you so much for the time that you gave to us. And best of luck in all the time you're going to have now and all the wonderful things that you and your wife can do together with all this extra time. I think it's wonderful that we recognize the students. And tonight, it was great to see all the athletes and just hear how well our wonderful, small, little town is doing. Our students do great things, so that's amazing, and I'm glad that we recognize it. I want to say congratulations to our lead teachers. I have to say, I just love all the people that stepped up. And you guys have touched my family personally, just by being amazing teachers. And you've done wonderful things in this community, so thank you so much. And I know you're going to go on to, you know, as Tina said, provide, you're going to be great advocates for your peers, so thank you so much. I also wanted to say, this holiday season, whatever it is that you holiday, whatever it is that you celebrate this holiday, I just hope that everybody has peace, joy, and happiness. And our lives are very, very busy. So take some time to just be with your families and make memories and be together. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, Kelly. Jen?
I'm not going to be able to say it as well as Jonathan and Kelly, but thank you, Mike, for all of your service. I mean, 12 years, I can't even imagine. But you have done it so, so well. You, just like they said, you know, really are just the epitome of professional, respectful, intelligent, and you've been a great mentor and somebody that I feel very comfortable, you know, just asking a question or whatever it is without judgment or any even kind of pressure to think a certain way or anything like that. And I think our district has really benefited from the time that you have served. So thank you, and thank you, Jen, for the sacrifice it takes. It is a lot of time given, and to do it well, you have to give a lot of time. So 12 years is outstanding. Thank you. And thank you to our new lead teachers. I think that's going to be a great extra influence in our elementary. I know some of them are really good educators, so I know they all are, but I know some of them personally, because my children had them. And they're great. And thank you to the Hertz family for doing that donation of their time to improve the baseball field. I think that'll be great. And congratulations to the athletes, and excited to see what they do in the winter. Thank you.
You know, not to repeat what everyone has said, I'll keep it brief. I wish everyone the best over the holidays and time with their families and their loved ones. And thank you, Mike, for all of your dedication over the years. And, you know, it's a long time, and it's, I think it's been some challenging times. So you have led very well, you know, for the best interests of parents, students, teachers, the community that you obviously love. So thank you so much, and I just, I'll keep it brief, but thank you. And I do echo what everyone has said, so.
First of all, always great to see recognition of the students. It's, I think it's always a great, especially it's a nice memory for them as they're kind of going through their classes and such. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Mike, it's been great working with you the past couple of years. I'm a big believer in longevity within a position, right? So you can't really, I really think that you can't really improve something unless you fully know it, really, right? And so having done it for 12 years and, you know, you definitely left it better than when you started, I'm assuming, because all the people here have said such wonderful things about you. So it's been great to work with you and wish all the best.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Dave, you want to say anything?
Yeah, I mean, kind of like three weeks ago, I'll say it again, just thank the good Lord that we're all here together and that we have a lot on the road in front of us. And Mike, I shared everything that I'd said before very candidly. And most importantly, since I'm somebody who lives for the fight, I appreciate that anytime you ever had to say anything to me, you said it man to man, in closed door. And that's always the way it was, and that's what I respect. And that's what I respect most about you, that you're a man of your word and that you're honest and straightforward. So I appreciate that. I hope we find that going forward in the new year, because we have quite a bit in front of us. And, you know, to everybody that's here, it seems that you're always the last one standing. But, and to all our staff here in our community, no matter what you call the holiday, enjoy it, have a good time, be healthy, be safe. There's a lot of people out there that aren't so safe and don't think before they act or get into a car or say what they say. So just enjoy the time, and I'm looking forward to the new year.
Would you like to go last, Mike?
Sure.
Okay, so then I'll just echo everybody else's, thanking all of, I'm excited for the lead teachers. I love that our staff brings ideas, and they kind of, they don't just bring problems, they bring solutions, and then they tell us why that they brought the solution. So it's like way ahead of it. It's really like Tara McLean did with something she was noticing and the idea with the lead teachers and how we went from like kind of supervisor to department has, a lot of that was, came from the staff and their ideas. And I really appreciate how you guys are really thinking outside the box and trying to do the best that you can. And I'm really excited to have that opportunity to work with our staff and administration and to continue that in the future. As far as Mike goes, I don't know, I feel like it's been like 10 years in some ways when we started during COVID. And there were some really interesting meetings that we've been through and some challenging situations that we've had to navigate. And like I said when I spoke earlier, you were kind of like the rock for me. I mean, you were always there if I needed something, and there were, you just had so much information, and I really, really appreciate it. And I also have your number, Jen. Case I can't reach him. Anyway, I really wish you guys like a lot of time together that you've missed and enjoying your kids as they're going into adulthood and your son's graduating. And we'll see you on the field for graduation, for sure. And, yeah, I just, I really appreciate everything that you've taught me, and you will be missed. I wish everybody a happy holiday.
Okay, I get to go last, wow. Well, thank you to the lead teachers for stepping up as I'm stepping down. So that's a, that's a comfort as I'm doing that. But just, I'll just add one thing that I want to add to my comments in thanking the teachers and the staff and the administrators is, you know, thank you for taking care of my children in all the years of, you know, them growing up through the system. And I've had four, most of you know, not everybody maybe, but have four kids who've grown up through the system. And one went to Columbia, and she's out on her own now, and she's got a job, and she's, and she's working. So that's great. And I have, you know, one in school and two about to graduate this year and getting ready to start to school. And just thank you on behalf of myself and my wife for, you know, taking such good care of my children and taking good care of all the children of Kennebun. So thank you, it's been great to, thank you, Tina, for your kind words. And it's been great working with the KEA over the years. You know, one thing that I've, you know, kind of enjoyed is, you know, kind of working with that as well. But thank you for taking care of my children, thank you for taking care of all the children, and thank you for everything that you do, so. And thank you guys for all your kind words, it was really nice, thank you.
Okay. Well, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.